Hey Ram Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hi Krishna, this is Pranam to all the devotees. Thank you all for joining in for our Bhagavad Gita study session today. Today we want to start the very, very important chapter of Bhagavad Gita which is chapter number eight entitled Attaining the Supreme. In fact, that is the goal of our life, right? We want to attain Krishna Prima and then we want to serve the Lord without being, without being conditioned with the modes of material nature. We want to serve the Lord in an uninterrupted and unmotivated way. So how do we do that? That's what is this chapter all about. So we'll start with our prayers. Om Jnana Timiranda Sya Jnana Anjanah Shalakhaya. Chakshurun Miltham Yena Tasmai Sri Gurave Namaha. Sri Chaitanya Mano Vishtram Stapitam Yena Bhutale Swayam Rupa Kadhamayam Dadaati Swapa Danthikam. Vandeham Sri Guru Sri Uda Patakamalam Sri Gurum Vaishnavam Shch. Sri Rupam Saagri Chaadham Sahagna Raguna Khanvitam Tamsa Jeevam. Sadhveetam Sabadutam Parijana Sahitam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Devam. Sri Radha Krishna Padha Sahagna Lalita Sri Vishakhanvitam Shch. Nam Om Vishnu Padhaaya Krishna Prashaya Bhutale Sri Mata Bhuti Vedanta Swami Nidinamine. Namastey Saraswate Devay Dooravani Prachari Ne Visesho Sumyavadi Paschakya Resha Sarine. Nam Oh Mahavadanyaya Krishna Prima Pradhayate Krishnaaya Krishna Jayatanya Namne Gauru Dushyina Mahab. Panjatatva Atmakam Krishnam Bhaktarupa Swarupakam Bhaktaavataram Bhaktaakyam Namami Bhakta Shaktikam. He Krishna Karuna Sindho Dina Bandho Jagatpate Gopesh Gopika Kanta Radha Kanta Namusudhe. Tapta Kanchana Doorangi Radhe Vrindavanishwari Shabhaanusudhe Devi Pranamami Hari Priyae. Vanchakalpadru Bhiyashcha Prasindubhyevacha Patitaanampavani Bhio Vaishnave Bhio Namu Namaha. Gurave Gaurachandraaya Radhikaya Dharali Krishnaaya Krishna Bhaktaaya Tatbhaktaaya Namu Namaha. Mookam Karoti Vachalam Pangum Langay Deirim Jattrapatam Vandeh Sri Gurundina Karinam Pranandam Adavam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Mishvaram. Hari Om Tatsat. Jai Sri Krishna Jayatanya Brahunityananda Sri Advaita Radha Sri Vasali Gaurabhakta Vrinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna. So thank you all for joining in. Let us quickly jump into chapter number eight. So we got the knowledge of the absolute, but how do we attain, right? We saw how mere knowledge is of no use. We have applied that knowledge and then get our results and there is proper application. That's why more than knowledge, what we need is realization, what we need is wisdom, what we need is practical application. That is what is most important in devotional service in Krishna consciousness. Otherwise, we can become experts in the verses of Bhagavad Gita, but if we don't know how to apply, then it is as good as a person who knows all the formula, but does not know which formula to apply to which mathematical problem. That in that way, the person fail in the exam, isn't it? So similarly, if we have to pass this examination called life, then we need to understand the practical application of Bhagavad Gita. How do we apply the principles of Bhagavad Gita in our day-to-day life? So it's always remember Krishna, never forget Krishna as we are living, as we are healthy in our day-to-day life. Then it is up to Krishna, right? Krishna says, I will make you remember me at the time of death, provided you remember me when you are living, when you are healthy, right? Kulashekara Maharaj, Kulashekara Alwar, right? King Kulashekara, he prays, he that at the time of death, right? There is kapha vaka pitta all imbalanced. At that time, how can one think of the supreme lord, right? The lord says, you think of me when you are healthy, when you are happy, when you are living your normal life, then I will take care of you. I will ensure my remembrance when you are in the deathbed, then everything is not working. So we do remember Krishna when everything is under our control and we depend on Krishna for remembrance at the time of death. So attaining the supreme is by remembering Krishna at the time of death. How do we remember Krishna at the time of death? By remembering Krishna throughout our life as we are living. So on that note, let's quickly start with chapter eight of the Bhagavad Gita which is entitled Attaining the Supreme. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Let me share on screen. Yeah, Arjunu Vacha Holri, okay. Shridhar Prabhu, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Dandat Pranam Madhaji.
Hare Krishna, Vannat Pranam.
Chapter eight, Attaining the Supreme, text one. Arjunu Vacha Kim Tat Tat Brahmam Kim Kima Yatyamam Kim Karma Purushatamam Adhibuddha Adhibuddha Ancha Kimu Proktam 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 Vade Jaiivam Kimuchye De Re Krishna. Arjunu Vacha, Arjunu said, Kim, what? Tat, that Brahma, Brahman, Kim, what? Adhay, Adhay Atmam, the self, Kim, what? Karma, fruitive activity, purusha uttama, oh supreme person, adhibuddha, adhibuddham, the material manifestation cha and Kim, what? Proktam is called Adhi, Adhvaitha Adh. Adhihe Taivam, the demigods, Kim, what? Uchye De, is called, translation by Prabhupada. Arjunu inquired, oh my lord, oh supreme person, what is Brahman? What is the self? What are the fruitive active? What is the material manifestation and what are the demigods? Please explain this to me, Hare Krishna, perpet by Prabhupada. In this chapter, Lord Krishna answers different questions from Arjunu, beginning with what is Brahman? The lord also explained karma, fruitive activities, devotional service and yoga principles and devotional services in its pure form. The Srimad Bhagavatam explained that supreme absolute truth is known as Brahman, Brahmatma and Bhagavan. In addition, the living entity, the individual soul is called Brahman. Arjunu also enquires about the Atma, which refers to body, soul and mind. According to the vedic directory, Atma refers to the mind, soul, body and senses also. Arjunu also, Arjuna has addressed the supreme lord as purushatama, supreme person, which means that he was putting these persons not simply to a friend, but to the supreme person knowing him to be the supreme authority able to give different definitive answers. Hare Krishna Dandat Pranam Madhaji.
Hare Krishna Prabhu, thank you so much. So here we are going back to, if you remember the second chapter. Arjunu was asking a lot of questions and he was thinking, he was saying, oh Krishna, what should we do? You take my chariot here, you take my chariot there. Everything Lord Krishna was following, right? From the first chapter till the second chapter, when Arjunu, Arjunu told Krishna, tatvidi pranipateena, what is that? Shishteham Saadi Maantva Prapannam Karpan Yado Shoh Pata Swabhaa Pricham Itvaam Dharma Sammooda Cheta. Yashre Yasyanis Chitam Bruhitanme Shishteham Shadi Maantva Prapannam. Yeah, so Shishteham Shadi Maantva Prapannam, I am your disciple and the soul surrendered unto you, please guide me. Then Krishna, when Arjunu told that to Krishna, only then Krishna started off with whatever he had to speak. Until then Krishna was only a passive listener, right? So when does Krishna play an important role in our life? When we accept the instructions of guru and we follow those instructions. When we are accepting that I am subordinate to my guru, I am subordinate to Krishna and I have to serve the lord. I need to understand how I can serve the lord. When that is our mood, then guru also gives us instructions. Tatvidi pranipateena Pariprasneena Sevaya. When will we question about something, when we don't know how to do or when we are inquiring, what is a better way to do it, right? That is when we inquire, Pariprasneena and then say, we have to do service. When we please them, then only they will give us transcendental knowledge. It is not material knowledge that you pay fees in a college and then you attend the classes and then you pass an exam and then, you know, and then you are, you are done, right? Even that passing requires a lot of difficulty these days. But what to speak of? Transcendental knowledge. Transcendental knowledge is, there is no, in earlier times, you know, the children used to go to gurukul, especially the boys, when they used to get trained in gurukul, they used to not pay any monetary fees in terms of money to the, to the guru, right? They used to stay with the guru, like even Krishna and Sudama for that reason, whether you are a Shaktria, whether, whether one is a Brahmana, right? The common thing was that you go and live in the guru's ashram and you do menial work. Who are the guru, please the guru, guru will teach us, whatever is required for us to advance in spiritual life and that is how the entire first twenty-five years are supposed to be lived as a brahmachari. As a brahmachari means what? Studying of vedic scriptures, trying to understand how to live life, what is the goal of life, ahambrahmasmi, why am I suffering? All of those things, study, proper study of scriptures, right? But our initial twenty-five years, what happens? We studied, started a competency, we studied engineering, we studied medicine, but we have no time to, what, what can help our soul to evolve, right? We don't have no time. But then, that's why Krishna also says, those who practice devotional service and have not completed the devotional service, they get born in the family of Vaishnavas where they get an opportunity right from birth to understand to do, to do both parallelly, to materially balance their material life as well as spiritual life. Of course, they go to school, of course, they learn their A B series, but you also learn Bhagavad Gita, Ashlokas, you also understand how to live this life. You also have the association of, you know, girls or boys of their age group. So it's very important to understand the word Atma, the word Atma refers to body, soul and mind, various places according to the context. Atma refers to a body, senses as well as the mind, right? But then one has to inquire, if one is in, cannot understand what does it mean? What is the instruction for me? Then you have to surrender to the guru and humbly inquire and get instructions, either from our diksha guru or from our shiksha gurus. When, when things are not clear, we need to surrender, ask, render service, get the instruction and follow it in our life. And that is the process of learning transcendental subject matters. One cannot pay any money, of course, we, we do give guru daksina, we give whatever is possible, the best we give to our gurus, but, but that is not. But, but that is not, that is not like, you know, you pay the college fees and then you demand the professor, you know, you need to give me time. I've given, paid the money, isn't it? But that, that's not, that's not the attitude, that, that's not an attitude that is even acceptable in, in material education also. One needs to respect the teacher, right? Nowadays, it's not seen, right? It has become so dear, downgraded that, you know, they, they question the teacher, you know, in whatever way they want. But it is not acceptable even in the material platform. But then what to speak of the spiritual platform? One does not pay any money and in return obtain transcendental knowledge, it is not possible. Because how the transcendental knowledge is revealed, Krishna tells himself. Deshem Evanu Kampartham Aham Ajnana Jamthamaha Na Shyamya Atma Bhavastho Again, Atma is coming here. Jnana Deepena Basvata Here, Atma refers to the heart. I give the transcendental knowledge in the heart of a devotee who engages in my devotional service. And Krishna does not directly give transcendental knowledge to conditioned souls, right? How does Krishna give mercy? Krishna gives knowledge, Krishna gives mercy, Krishna gives realization through his pure devotees. The mercy always flows down through the guru parampara. You cannot jump and only respect Krishna, right? That is the kanista stage. But we want to grow in our devotional service, we want to perfect our life in this lifetime. And what are we supposed to do? We are supposed to take the shelter of a bona fide guru, ask, inquire, they ask suitable questions about self-realization, follow the instructions and this is the way we will advance in devotional service. That's why Krishna also spoke only when Arjunu surrendered as a student. Otherwise Krishna was not willing to speak. Alright, let's move ahead. Okay, there's something on the chat box. What is it? Not audible, is it so? Okay, one second, let me see who raised the hand. Okay, Prashibhanu Ganyam Madhaji, please go ahead, text two. Am I audible or not?
Yes, Madhaji, you are audible.
Okay, go ahead, text two.
Adhi Yagna Katham Kotra Dehe Sminmatu Sudhana Prayankaale Chakatham Nayo Senior Tatma Bhihe. Synonyms. Adhi Yagnam means the lord of sacrifice. Katham, how? Kaha, who? Attra, here, dehe, in the body, as, asmin, de, madusudhana, oh madusudhana, pray, prayankaale, at the time of death, ta and Katham, how? Gneha, asie, you can be known, ni, near the Atma Bhihe, by the self-control. Translation, translation by Shri Prabhupada, Shri Prabhupada Kijay. Who is the lord of sacrifice and how does he live in the body, oh madusudhana? And how can those engaged in, in devotional service know you at the time of death, perpert? Lord of sacrifice may refer to either Indra or Vishnu. Vishnu is the chief of the primal, primal demigods, including Brahma and Seva. And Indra is the chief of the administrative demigods. Both Indra and Vishnu are worshipped by Yagna performance. But here Arjun asks, who is actually the lord of Yagna, means sacrifice? And how the lord is reciting within the body of the living entity? Arjun addressed the lord of madusudhana because Krishna, Krishna once killed a demon named Madhu. Actually, these questions which are of the nature of doubt should not have arisen in the mind of Arjunu because because Arjun is a Krishna conscious devotee, therefore their doubts are like demons. Since Krishna is so expert in killing demons, Arjun here addressed him as madusudhana. So that Krishna might kill the demonic doubts that arise in Arjunu's mind. Now the word prayankaale in this verse is very significant because whatever we do in life will be tested at the time of death. Arjun is very anxious to know of those who are, who are constantly engaged in Krishna consciousness. What should be their position at the time, at that final moment, at that time of death? All the bodily functions are disrupted and the mind is not in a proper condition. Thus disturbed by the bodily situation, one may not be able to remember the supreme lord. Maharaja Kulakshitra, a great devotee, prays, my dear lord, just now I am quite healthy and it is better that I die immediately so that the swan of my mind can sneak entrance at the stem of your lotus feet. The metaphor is used because the swan, a bird of the water takes pleasure in digging into the lotus flowers. Its sporting, sporting proclivity is to enter the lotus flower. Maharaja Kulakshitra says to the lord, now my mind, now my mind, mind is undisturbed and I am quite healthy. I am quite healthy. If I die immediately thinking of your lotus feet, then I am sure that my performance of your devotional service will become perfect. But if I have no, if I have to wait for my natural death, then I do not know what will happen because at that time the body function, bodily functions will be disrupted. My throat will be chock up and I do not know whether I shall be able to chant your name. Better let me die immediately. Arjun questions, how a person can fix his mind on Krishna's lotus feet at such a time?
Yeah, thank you, Madhaji.
Okay, Hare Krishna.
So Kulashekara, we were talking about that in the beginning of the session, right? So Maharaja Kulashekara, he always, he prays that, let me, let me die now, right? Now I am able to think of you, oh lord, but what will happen and when the natural death comes, then we are not prepared, right? Because our, our body is not working properly, our remembrance is gone, we have become old and we are lying on the bed, probably unconscious or whatever may be the state, you are not able to remember the lord. So let me now while singing and dancing, while performing aarti, while, while honoring Krishna Prasadha, in the remembrance of the lord, let me die. That is the prayer of King Kulashekara. Because when we die, if we remember the lord, then automatically we will reach the abode of the lord, right? But then with the whole life, we've been thinking of some, some TV serial, some cricket match, who's winning this match, that match, etc. That will only throw up as a flashback when we are leaving our body. So whatever is the, whatever is, are the things that we've given importance in our life, there is a flashback that happens at the time of death, wherein all these important events will, will, will throw up like a flashback and we are seeing that flashback in front of our eyes, right? And then what happens? Whatever we are, whatever is the flashback that comes, we see that, we remember that and then our next body will be according to that, those particular thoughts that we have. That is why we should be very careful how we are spending the maximum amount of time in a day, right? Sometimes we think, arre, do ghante ke liye kuch kar dete hain, we just watch a movie. After that, I have completed my rounds in the morning and then I have done my reading also, I have done my hearing also, now let me watch two hours movie. Isn't it, right? What, 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 it does not have any harm, isn't it, right? I just watch a movie, let me entertain myself, right? But what kind of impressions that might create? Of course, we all need recreation, it's not that, you know, we have to, you know, we all need a little bit of enjoyment, but what, what, how we do that enjoyment is, is by dovetailing that in the service of the lord, right? If we like to sing, we sing bhajans. If you like to watch movie, there are so many, there is this Abhayacharan series about Prabhupada. Then there is this Mahabharata, then there is Ramayan, all done by like Bhakticharu Swami Maharaj is actually, Bhakticharu Swami Maharaj has created the Abhayacharan series and then we have our Prabhu in Mumbai, Prabhupada's disciple. Yadubar Prabhu, Yadubar Prabhu has, has also directed so many movies about, you know, about so many videos about Shilpa Prabhupada and, and also some of the movies, I think, I believe he's, he's directed. So if at all, and we also have so many spiritual dramas, right? If you Google on Radha Gopinath Media or even Chennai Temple, there are so many wonderful dramas depicting the various pastimes by the devotees. We can watch that, right? If at all we have, we finished our sadhana for the day and then we want to have some kind of entertainment, we should have sadhvi kind of entertainment, right? We can hear instrumental music, we can hear bhajans by Bhakticharu Swami Maharaj, Urdhama Mudra Swami Maharaj, like that and then, you know, we can, you know, dress the daities, we can, I mean, I mean, sing for the lord, dance for the lord, go to the temple, have the rishna of the daities, go to Dharm, right? And be in the association of devotees, right? So in this way, when we associate with devotees, then we are enjoying also, it is not an austerity also. At the same time, we are remembering Krishna, right? Matchittamatgata Parana Bodennta Parasparam Kada Yantuschamam Nityam Tushyam Ticharamam Tichar. This is what Krishna says, the devotees do, right? It's not the devotees are like, oh god, what do I do? I have nothing to do. In fact, devotees, they don't have time, right? I don't have time to, you know, if, if at all I have more time, I will do more, I will do more reading. I will do more chanting, Hare Krishna Mahamitra, I will sing bhajans for the lord. I will go and buy some things for the lord, buy some provisions, buy some fruits, offer it to the lord. Niti bait and dress the daities more often. Then we don't have time. Sometimes our day goes by and then, you know, sometimes that, you know, I've heard only for one hour, you know, the regular minimum Bhagavatam session. I've not, I've not heard more, you know, in this way devotees don't have time, if at all there is more time, I could have done that. So that is a mood of a devotee. A devotee never feels, oh, I have heard enough, I have sang enough, enough. Abhi, abhi kuch aur karte hain, man ko helaate hain, right? That's not the mood of a devotee, right? A devotee always thinks, how can I serve the lord more? How can I be more in the association of devotees, right? The time is never enough for a devotee to serve the lord because there are unlimited, empty opportunities to serve the lord and that is a mood of a devotee, right? So here Kulashekara Maharaj is praying, let me die now when I'm remembering you, when I'm serving you, rather than wait for that time when my body is not functioning properly, at that time how will I remember you? So this is a mood of a devotee, yeah. Alright, let's move forward, text number three. Text number three, okay. Bajati Bhagavan Vacha, Sudha Madhaji, go ahead. Sudha Madhaji, able to unmute? Okay, Sindhu Madhaji, able to unmute? Okay, what is happening? Sindhu Madhaji?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, Madhaji. Hare Krishna. Is she audible to all? Okay, let's try someone else. Rajneesh Prabhu, please go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Madhaji.
Oh, is it a problem for me? Okay, let me see. Okay, let's try one more question. Karpa Goli Madhaji, you want to say something?
Yes, Madhaji.
Okay, I think it's a problem with mine. This has got a new speaker connected, I believe it's not working. All this time it was only.
Chali Reed, Madhaji.
One second.
Chali Reed, Madhaji.
Okay, let me make it, oh, can I have to log in my mobile? Something is wrong. Hare Krishna, can someone speak?
Chali Reed, Madhaji. Madhaji, am I audible? Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna, am I audible?
Just give me one second. Let me log in.
Am I audible, Madhaji? Audible, Madhaji. Shridhar Prabhu, am I audible?
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna.
Not audible, Madhaji. Madhaji is not audible. Not audible. Madhaji is not audible.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram.
Ram Ram.
Hare Krishna. Sindhu Madhaji, are you able to unmute yourself?
Yeah, Madhaji, unmuted already. Shall we start, right?
Yeah, text number three.
Text three, okay. Text. Hare Krishna. Sri Bhagavan Vacha. Aksharam Brahmaparamam Swabhaavodhyatmam Uchye De. Bhuta Bhavodavak Karo Vishargharm Samyataha. Samyataha, Sri Bhagavan Vacha, the supreme personality of God, it says, aksharam indistractable Brahmaparama transcendental, swabhaa eternal nature, adhyat, self, yate is called bhuta bhava udhavakara, producing the material bodies of the living entities, visargha creation, karma fruitive activities, samyataha is called. Translate, what was the one, Shilpa Prabhupada Kijay. Supreme personality of God, it said, the indestructible transcendental living entity is called Brahman and his eternal nature is called adhyatma, the self. Action pertaining to the development of the material bodies of the living entities is called karma or fruitive activities. In this, indestructible and eternally existing and its constitution is not changed at any time. But beyond Brahman, there is parabrahman. Brahman refers to the living entity. Parabrahman refers to the supreme personality of God. The constitutional position of the living entity is different from the position he takes in the material world. Material consciousness, his nature is to try to be, try to be the lord of the matter, but in spiritual consciousness, Krishna consciousness, his position is to serve the supreme. When the living entity is in material consciousness, he has to take on various bodies in the material world that is called karma or varied creation by the force of material consciousness. In varying literature, the living entity is called jivaatma and Brahman, but he is never called parabrahman. The living entity jivaatma takes different positions, sometimes emerges into the dark material nature and identifies himself with matter and sometimes he identifies himself with superior spiritual nature. Therefore he is called the supreme lord's marginal energy. According to his identification with the material or spiritual nature, he is. He may take a body from any of the eighty-four lakh species of life, but in spiritual nature, he has only one body. He is manifested sometimes as a man, demigod, animal, beast, bird, etc. according to his karma. To attain material heavenly planets and enjoy their facilities, he sometimes performs sacrifices, yagnya. But when his merit is exhausted, he returns to earth again in the form of a man. This process is called karma. Samdokya upanishad, this types, the vedic sacrificial process. On the sacrificial altar, five kinds of offerings are made into five kinds of fire. The five kinds of the fire are conceived of as the heavenly planets, clouds, the earth, man and women. The five kinds of sacrificial offerings are faith, the joy on the moon, rain, grain and seaweed. The process of sacrifice, the living entity makes specific sacrifices to attain specific heavenly planets and consequently reaches death. When the merit of sacrifice is exhausted, the living entity descends to earth in the form of rain. When the merit of sacrifice is exhausted, the living entity descends to earth in the form of rain. Then takes on the form of grains and the grains are eaten by man and transformed into semen which impregnates the women. And thus the living entity once again attains the human form to perform sacrifice and so repeats the same cycle. In this way, the living entity perpetually comes and goes on the material path. The Krishna conscious person however avoids sacrifices. He takes directly to Krishna consciousness and thereby prepares himself to return to Godhead. Important commentators in the Bhagavad Gita unreasonably assume that Brahman takes the form of jiva in the material world. And to substantiate this, they refer to chapter fifteen, verse seven of the Gita. But in this verse, the Lord also speaks of the living entity as an eternal fragment of myself. The fragment of God, the living entity may fall down into the material world, but the Supreme Lord Akshuta never falls down. Therefore, the assumption that the Supreme Brahman assumes the form of jiva is not acceptable. It is important to remember that in the Vedic literature, Brahman, the living entity is distinguished from parabrahman, the Supreme Lord.
Hi, thank you Mataji. So here, Prabhupada is making a distinction in the purport about, because sometimes Brahman also refers to the Supreme Lord. And Brahman also is referring to the living entity, right? Jivaatma is also referred as Brahman, right? But and then in the realizations also, the first level of realization is understanding the Lord is Brahman. That means one who is, uh one who is superior to the material nature, to the three modes of material nature. That means Brahma, Bhuta, Prasannatma. So and Brahman, it may refer to the living entity also, it may refer to the Lord also. But then the word parabrahman always refers only to the Supreme Personality of Godhead, right? That's why we need to understand here that, um, Prabhupada gives this example, right? Uh of, uh, uh, you know, uh, what is that, uh, the, uh, the spark of fire and fire, right? Fire is, the fire is also having the same characteristics or the components of, um, whatever components the fire has or even salt water for that reason, right? Whatever chemical composition it is made of, the living entity is also a spark of the Supreme Personality of Godhead. So the components are the same in terms that, the living entity is also eternal like the Supreme Lord. But the living entity is not, um, of course, the living entity is eternal, but because of the identification with the matter, that the, they identify with the body and the body is subject to death, isn't it? That is why the jiva tattvas are called tattashtashakti, that's why they are called marginal energy of the Lord, right? Tata means, the, you know, the, राधाकुंडा तत्ता, कुंज कपिर. There we, there we are talking about tatha, what is that tatha? Tata means, it's like the bank of a river, right? That in the banks of the river of Radhakund, hmm, there is a beautiful kunja, right? Um, same that we are singing that song, right? So what is that tatha? Tata means bank. So the banks of the river, why is it referred here? Because the bank of the river, sometimes it's wet and sometimes it's dry. Similarly, we are the marginal energy of the Lord. Sometimes we are, we are rich, you know, with service for the Supreme Personality of Godhead, right? That time we are wet, but sometimes we are so dry that we are completely into sense gratification, right? So sometimes we are, um, we are inclined towards the marginal, uh, the internal energy of the Lord. Sometimes we are inclined towards the external energy of the Lord. When we are inclined with external energy, we engage in sense gratification, exploitation of material nature. Then we are inclined towards the, uh, the, um, Antaranga Shakti of the Lord. Then we want to engage in devotional service, right? All of us go through that in various phases in our own life, right? Sometimes you are so intrigued from devotional service, sometimes we are like, okay, let me take a break, let me take rest and then we go and sleep. Right? तमोगुणा में पूरा घुस जाते हैं, है न? So also, as, as the marginal living entities, we have the free will. Either to be inclined towards the, uh, the Antaranga Shakti of the Lord or the External Energy of the Lord. Or Bahiranga Shakti of the Lord, which is the external energy of the Lord. That is why we call it tattashtashakti or marginal energy. So the marginal energy can be completely covered by illusion depending on the choice that the living entity makes. Right? If the living entity wants to completely enjoy, then what happens? The illusion takes over completely and that living entity is completely under the influence of the illusion energy of the Lord, who is Maya Devi. But, um, but the living entity has a choice to always choose devotional service. And if that choice is done, like as Radhanachal Maharaj says, there's a good dog and a bad dog. Both the dogs are barking, but whichever dog we feed, that dog will become more strong, right? If we feed the good dog all the time, then what happens? The good dog becomes so strong that it will, the bad dog dies and its sound is not heard, right? Sometimes, uh, you know, we want to eat something and then we don't want to wait, right? We don't want to go home and then have prasadam, right? Let me have just something on the road, right? While I'm going home, right? Because I'm feeling very hungry, right? That time the good dog says, no, no, I have 10 minutes my ghar pahunchayenge, there will be prasadam there, let us have that. The bad dog is saying, no, 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 it will take 10, it will take 10 minutes more, I'm feeling very hungry. The Pani Puri shop is just here, let me have, right? And we all, generally, at least I can say for myself, sometimes we do succumb, that okay, it's okay. You know, पानी पुरी तो जे नहीं मिलता है, ना, इसमें नो ऑनली नो गार्लिक रहता है, so let's have it, right? And then as many times, as we, as we say yes to that roadside Pani Puri, you have to ensure, we have been know that we are under the control of Maya, right? The, the, every time we say yes to Maya, we are saying no to Krishna. And that is going to have, um, you know, a more, more difficult task that we are giving ourselves to say yes to Krishna. But if we continuously say yes to Krishna, it becomes so natural to us that we automatically say yes to Krishna. So that is what it is, right? So a living entity has a free will, if, if out of, using the free will, we always remember Krishna, do things that, um, uh, that Lord Shri Krishna has instructed us through the Bhagavad Gita. Then it becomes easy for us to transform our lives and then, um, you know, it is not so much difficult. Because, because the good dog is barking and we are not even hearing the ba- bad dog. That should be the state of, uh, you know, transformation of consciousness. But if you continuously say yes to the bad dog, then what happens? Uh, the good dog is, uh, the, the good dog is dead and then we have to exercise so much more free, so much more determination, so much more willpower to actually say no to Maya in the initial stages. But then it becomes a way of life and that's how, um, devotees advance in Krishna consciousness. The more number of times you are able to say no to Maya and say yes to Krishna, you are advancing in spiritual life, hmm, that's what it is. Alright, let's quickly move forward, text number four. Okay, let me share my screen. Yeah, text number four, uh, okay, Rajneesh Prabhu, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Mataji.
Hare, ah, Kaldevach.
अधि भूतम क्षरोभाव पुर्षस्याधि देवतम् अधि यज्ञोहमेवात्र देहे देह वृताम वरः अधि भूतम, the physical manifestation. The star, constantly changing. भावा, nature, पुर्षा, the universal form including all the demigods like Karna, Kimbo. Pa and अधि, अधि वेतम, अधि, अधि देवतम, god. अधि, अधि देवा. अधि यज्ञा, the super soul. अहम, वन, Krishna. इवा, certainly, अत्रा, in this. देहे, body. देहा, देहा भूतम, of the embodied. वरा, oh best, translation. Oh best of the embodied being. The physical nature which is constantly changing is called अधि भूता, the material manifestation. The universal form of the Lord which includes all the demigods like those of fun, of the sun and the moon. And moon is called अधि. अधि देव, अधि देव and I, the Supreme Lord. Represented as super soul in the heart of every embodied being, I am called. अधि यज्ञा, the lord of sacrifice, purport. The physical nature is constantly changing. Physical nature is constantly changing, material bodies generally pass through six stages. They are born, they grow, they remain for same, some duration. They produce some by product, they dwindle and then they vanish. This physical nature is called अधि भूता. It is created at a certain point and will be any hill, any hill related. At a certain point, the conception of the universal form of, the concession of the universal form. Universal form of the Supreme Lord which includes all the demigods and different planets is called अधि, अधि देवता. And present in the body along with the individual soul is the super soul, a planetary representation of God. The super soul is called the paramatma or अधि यज्ञा. Or is situated and is situated in the heart. The word इवा is particularly important in the context of, in the context. In the context of this verse, because by this word, the Lord stresses that paramatma is not different from the super soul, the Supreme Personality of Godhead seated beside the individual soul. Is the witness of the individual soul's activities and is the source of soul's various types of consciousness. The super soul gives the individual soul an opportunity to actually and witness these activities. The function of all these different manifestations of Supreme Lord automatically become clarified for the Jewish conscious devotee engaged in transcendental service of the Lord. The gigantic universal form of Lord, of the Lord called अधि देवता is contemplated by the neophyte, neophyte who cannot approach the Lord's manifestation as a soul. The neophyte is advised to contemplate the universal form of the Virat Kurush. Legs are considered the lower planet and whose eyes are considered standing. And whose head is considered as upper planet. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, thank you Prabhu. Yeah, so even in the eleven chapter of Bhagavad Gita, Prabhupada says that this Virat Rupa is only for neophytes. Right? Because this Virat Rupa that Krishna actually displaced to Arjuna. Prabhupada mentions in the purport that this is not for Arjuna. Arjuna knows that Krishna has the Supreme Personality of Godhead. However, uh, so those kind of people who want to, who claim themselves as God. Who claim themselves that, you know, I am an avatar of the Lord, right? In Kaliyuga, we have, almost every road, we have a lord, right? We have somebody who claims themselves to be lord, especially in South India, isn't it? So if somebody claims themselves to be the lord, then, you know, we can ask him to show the Virat Rupa. Hmm, so in that way, uh, you know, Prabhupada says that, you know, an intelligent person, a devotee is an intelligent person. He will not allow himself to be cheated, that anyone and everybody become, can become god. Nobody can become god. God is god in all circumstances, right? So in this way, Prabhupada explains here and also in this particular verse, Prabhupada is saying this gigantic universal form of the Lord is called अधि देवता. अधि देवता means, uh, it is not, it is not a transcendental form of the Lord that is eternally present in the spiritual world. In Vaikunta lokas or in Goloka Vrindavan, no. Virat Rupa is a temporary manifestation of the Lord, it's a Lord manifested and gave the chakshusha or the eyes to Arjuna to see that form. Yeah, so, uh, what is he saying? Yeah. So, uh, so yeah, so, uh, this particular, you see, Arjuna was able to see the two-handed form of Krishna and two-handed form of Krishna is the highest form, right? But then, uh, the Lord, uh, showed universal form to Arjuna based on his inquiries. Hmm, that I want to see this four-handed, uh, form of yours. And in this way, Arjuna, not all of the people who were situated in the battlefield of Kurukchandra could see this four-handed form. This was only shown to Arjuna, right? And when Arjuna saw that, he, he spoke that verse, right? Hey Krishna, hey आदव, hey सकेती, oh Krishna, you are the Supreme Personality of Godhead. You have so many eyes, you have so many arms, demigods and asuras are going inside your mouth. I can see all of us running into your mouth, right? All of this, I don't want to, this form is so bewildering and he just offers obeisances to Lord Shri Krishna, right? So it is not a form that devotees really want to, you know, savor or relish or, or see. Why? Because this form is very fierce, right? Uh, and not necessarily fierce because, even Narasimhadeva is very fierce, isn't it? But Pralat Maharaj was sitting in the lap of Narasimhadeva. So it's not about the external appearance, right? It is about the mood of the Lord, right? Narasimhadeva was very fierce to our Hiranika Shipu. But to our Pralat Maharaj, he was like, I was actually licking Pralat Maharaj, right? Just like a, uh, you know, the lion would lick its cubs, like that he was licking. So for Pralat Maharaj, he was not looking ferocious, right? But this Virat Rupa, even for Arjuna, the Lord was looking very ferocious. Because, because, uh, this is to drive home the point that a devotee is not interested in seeing this Virat Rupa. Why? Because this Virat Rupa is for neophytes. Two, the Virat Rupa is not an eternal form that is there in the Vaikunta lokas or in the Goloka Vrindavan planets. It is only for people in Kaliyuga, just to ensure that nobody claims themselves to be an avatar. So, uh, that, that Virat Rupa is said to be अधि देवक, देवता. It is not even, uh, not even and the platform of, um, what do you call, uh, अधि यज्ञa, right? अधि यज्ञa means, the Supreme Personality of Godhead, who is the ultimate beneficiary of all the sacrifices. That refers to Lord Vishnu. अधि देवता refers to the sun god, the moon god and all of these heavenly planets. Whereas अधि भूता refers to the earthly planets. Where things are changing every second, right? Change is our norm, isn't it? Hmm, our body is changing, right? देनोस्मिन्यतादेहे कौमारम्युवनंजरात अतादेहं तरंप्राप्तिति यहस्तत्रणमुयति Right? Sometimes, sometimes there is a child and the child grows and then, you know, we can see our photograph, uh, at least I'm forty-five. You know, if I look back at my college photographs or my school photographs, you know, I can see so much drastic change. Uh, and you can also, and it's also mentioned in the scriptures that every seven years, every cell in the body changes. That means what? The body is dead, the body is actually different after every seven years, right? But then, uh, when, when the death occurs, that means the soul leaves the body. But otherwise, the change is always happening in the body. The change is always happening in the earth, water, fire, air, ether, mind, intelligence and false ego, which are all the material and the subtle elements which are in the material world. Change is the only constant, right? It keeps on changing, but what is eternal? Eternal is not even the, uh, अधि देवता is eternal. Because आप ब्रह्म बुवन लोका पुनरावर्तिन अर्जुना, Indra also dies after a long time. Brahman also dies, even though he may, he may stay for four hundred and eleven million, thirty-three trillion years as per the earthly years, he dies, right? And it is said that from the point of view, the Supreme Personality of Godhead is just like a flash of lightning, that Brahman's lifetime, right? For us, it seems, oh my god, Brahman is like, living eternally, but it is like a flash of lightning from the point of view of Lord, right? So अधि देवता also is not, is not, uh, is also changing, is also subject to destruction. However, अधि यज्ञa, that is the super soul or the paramatma, who is non-different from the Supreme Personality of Godhead. Or which is a lower realization of the Supreme Personality of Godhead, that is referred to as अधि यज्ञa. बुक्तारम यज्ञतपस्तम सर्वलोक महेशुरम, सुहरदाम सर्वपुतानम यात्वमाम शांतिन्दिच्छति Right? When we understand that the Lord is the beneficiary of all the work that we do, all the sacrifices that we do. Then that sacrifice gives us the desired result, which is eternal. Otherwise, we do sacrifices to the demigods to get range or to get something, something, you know, to get good marks, etcetera. Whatever maybe we prescribe, the karma, kandha sections of the Vedas, you are not going to get any result, which is permanent. You will get results maybe if you are doing it properly, but such results will die with the body, okay? So now, next two verses is very, very important, um, what is the time? Let's do, let's do it tomorrow then, one twenty-three. Okay. Okay, let's do, let's do these two important verses and we will, uh, the verse for the week, let's take, let's take up Antakalechamamiva. Text five, let's ask someone to read. Okay, text number five, Rajneesh Prabhu already read. Devil Mataji can read five and Suda Mataji can read six and we'll end our session already, yeah.
Okay. Hare Krishna Mataji, eight point five. Antakalechamamiva smaran muktvakalevaram ya prayati samadhavam yatinaastyaatra saunshaya her. Synonyms, antakale, at the end of life, cha also, mammi, eva, certainly, smaran, remembering, muktv, quitting, kalevaram, the body, yaha, he who, prayati goes, saha he, madhavam, my nature, yatii achieves, na, not, asti, there is, atrah, yaha, saunshaya her doubt. Translation, translation by His Grace, Shri Lopraga, Shri Lopraga Kijay. And whoever at the end of his life quits this body, remembering me alone, at once attains my nature, of this, there is no doubt. Purport, in this verse, the importance of Krishna consciousness is stressed. Anyone who quits his body in Krishna consciousness is at once transferred to the transcendental nature of the Supreme Lord. The Supreme Lord is the purest of the pure. Therefore, anyone who is constantly Krishna conscious is also the purest of the pure. The word smaran, remembering, is important. Remembrance of Krishna is not possible for the impure soul who has not practiced Krishna consciousness in devotional service. Therefore, one should practice Krishna consciousness from the very beginning of life. If one wants to achieve success at the end of his life, the process of remembering Krishna is essential. Therefore, one should constantly incessantly, incessantly chant the Mahamantra, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. Yeah, should I continue Mataji? Hare Krishna, can you hear me? Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna, should I continue? Hello, Hare Krishna.
I believe you finished reading.
No Mataji.
So here, here what are we saying? The process of going back to Godhead is to remember Krishna at the end of our life. This is what we discussed, right? Okay, I hope I'm on it, I just got a call, I think because of that. Okay, sorry, now it's okay, thumbs up? Yeah, okay, all right. So what was I saying? Yeah. So the, the ultimate goal is to always remember Krishna, never forget Krishna as we are living. And then we will be able to always remember Krishna, never forget Krishna at the time of death. But what is more important is also to develop the quality of humility and tolerance, like Chetan Mahaprabhu's verse. Third verse of the Shashitkam, Prabhupada has quoted in this purport, saying that one has to be more tolerant than a tree. Why? Because it's not, oh, Devil Mataji didn't finish reading. Okay, that's fine, okay, so I'll just read the last part of the purport, because I got a call, I could not, okay, let me just read the last part. Therefore, one should constantly, incessantly chant Mahamantra. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. So Chetan has advised that one be as tolerant as a tree, taro apies hibiscus na. There may be so many impediments for a person who is chanting Hare Krishna. Nonetheless, tolerating all these impediments, one should continue to chant Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. So that at the end of one's life, one can have the full benefit of Krishna consciousness. So, so here, Chetan Mahaprabhu's Shashitkam third verse, Prabhupada is reiterating here. That it is not that a devotee will not have any impediments in life, right? Because sometimes people say, oh, I've been chanting sixteen rounds for five days. Why Krishna is not protecting me? What about the five to five hundred million lifetimes that we spent in doing all the, all of those things that we are not supposed to do, isn't it? So, in this way, we have to be patient, because, because we are patients for that reason, right? We are all, we are, we are all suffering from the disease of material existence. And we've got the medicine, we are in the process of getting, in the process of recovery, in the process of getting cured. But we need to have patience, we need to follow the proper diet, we need to take the medicines and then we have to remain patient. In this way, when we continuously remember the Lord, in spite of various impediments that may come up in our life. We still continue to chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra. In this way, we will, we will, we will receive the mercy of Guru and Goranga, seeing our sincerity, seeing our determination. We will receive the mercy of Guru and Goranga and in this way, we will be able to advance in our spiritual life. And that is our formula for remembering Krishna at the end of our life, right? So with that, let's conclude for today, let the verse for today. We will have Sudha Mataji and Nagavini Mataji read tomorrow, tomorrow is Friday, we will have our session. So that time, we will continue eight point six, we will start with Sudha Mataji and then Nagavini Mataji. So today, we will memorize this verse. This is a promise that Krishna is making. Krishna is saying, you remember me at the time of death, then you will come back to me without fail of this, there is no doubt, right? So in this way, Krishna is giving us a promise and how can we remember Krishna at the time of death? That also Krishna is telling us, right? If we remember Krishna throughout our life, then we don't have to worry that why I am not able to remember Krishna at the time of death. Krishna will take care of it, Yogukshima. Krishna will carry what we lack and preserve what we have, provided we offer everything to Krishna and serve Krishna in this way. Hare Krishna. The devotees can switch on your cameras, we will speak to two minutes, Hari Naam Sankiratan. And then I can see Nagavini Mataji stand up if it is for reading. Rajneesh Prabhu, Nagavini Mataji can lower your hand if it is for any query, we will take it up after the Kiratan. Okay, Nagavini Mataji's hand is up. So we come to you, whom all, I can see, I can see Shobha Mataji, Sridhar Prabhu, Karpa Gavali Mataji, Rohini Mataji, Vishwanukanya Mataji, Sarvokopi Sri Mataji, Harjeet Mataji. Sindhu Mataji, Vanmali Prabhu, Hemma Mataji, Rajneesh Prabhu and all our regular devotees are joined today. Thank you so much for joining in, Nagavini Mataji is, okay, she's, okay, fine. Maybe that was for reading, all right, thank you very much. So we'll end the session, meet you all tomorrow morning, five o'clock, Brahmo Murtachanting. And then at twelve thirty PM, as we continue from eight point six. So the verse for this week will be eight point five, Antakale Chamamiva, I hope devotees have studied last week's verse, you can mark the thumbs up. Maybe I'll, I'll put a poll today and today we will also start our Narasimha Kavacham after the Biju verse. Thank you very much.